Let's call this meeting to order. What a beautiful day is it in Daly City. The sun is shining, there's no fog in sight. Welcome, everyone. So I really want to thank all the applicants for submitting their application, for taking the opportunity. I'm sure many of you, my colleagues here, had time to review them. But we really have a good group of people who are civic-minded. And secondly, I want to thank all our staff, who's been pulling this all together. It's the first time I've done it, and I think it's the first time that my colleagues here on the dais has done so also. I really also want to thank the applicants, the staff. I want to also thank the Daly City community. And I want to thank you, council, for really investing your time for the next two days that we're going to be hearing and asking questions. Today, if we decide to get this done, I want you to understand, colleagues, that this is a very important decision we're going to make, but also recognizing that filling this position is very, very close to the November elections. So if we don't make a choice today, I'm grateful that all of you are here and part of this process. And so with that, I want to hand it over to our city attorney, who will go over the process. We also have our city clerk. For those of you watching, that will actually be pulling names out of, kind of drawing names. So it's very a fair process in regards to who will be interviewed.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I don't know, I can get into the procedure now, but I don't know if we want to do the formal roll call and call to order by the city clerk for attendance at this point?
May we have roll call, please?
Ms. De Giovanni?
Present.
Dr. Rod?
Here.
Mr. Sylvester?
Glenn Sylvester, present.
Ms. Manalo?
Present. Thank you very much. Pledge of the flag, let's all rise. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, a true republic where riches stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Madam City Attorney.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Members of the council, this evening, we have the interviews for the vacant city council position. By way of procedure, here's what we have established. We do have a public appearances, oral communications section, which we have limited to 15 minutes total in regards to any public comments regarding the applicant interview process prior to the deliberation of the council. We have limited the comments to one minute. So to the extent that we have comments that are redundant, the mayor does reserve the right to limit those comments, since we may have some redundant comments at that point. As we proceed through the process, we do have a number of applicants today, this evening. We will start the interview process with the city clerk to draw names randomly to determine the order of the candidates for the interview. At that point, the interviews will begin in this chamber. And the order of interviews will be based on the draw of the names. The format to be used for the interviews, the council was provided with five prepared questions. The questions would be two minutes each question and an optional closing statement at the pleasure of the applicant. We did list the questions for each council member to ask. I believe the mayor will be starting off the first prepared questions, and then we will go with each council member asking one question through the process. We do have a two-minute limit at this point, and we are looking to have 12 minutes total allotted for each of the applicants, which I believe our city clerk will be taking the time. And we'll also be having a warning to allow for each of the applicants to finish their points in the interview. It's estimated that we hope to have the interviews, we do have quite a few, to end at 9:00 PM this evening for the interviews to conclude, if we stick to the timeframe. And it's suggested, I believe, for our council to have a recess before break and deliberations of the council. If the council so desires, nominations will be open, and mayor will call for nominations of the appointment of the council. And if we do receive a majority for one of the nominations, then we will have an appointment for city council this evening. To the extent that we do not have an appointment or deliberations would like to continue, I believe the council has reserved for tomorrow to continue this meeting for further discussions and deliberations to the extent that we cannot conclude this evening. That is it, unless there's any questions of the council, we can go ahead and proceed.
Thank you, city attorney. And now, moving on to public. Oh, should we do the pub? We can do the, alright. Let's go with, let's go with you, madam city clerk. Would you want to? Okay.
Yeah, so we would make sure, if I may, through the mayor, just make sure we have all the cards during this period now.
Okay. So this is the last call for any public comment. Kindly bring it up. Thank you very much. Thank you. Okay. So the first speaker I have is Mele K. Latu.
Greetings, Madam Mayor, council members. My name is Mele K. Latu. I'm the board president of the Ravenswood City School District in East Palo Alto and Eastern Menlo Park. I've come here to allay my support for Manu Fo. I believe that she is an incredible leader. She's a team member. And as a council, we can relate, being on a board and needing a team player, someone that can bridge the divide, make hard decisions, and be a person that represents every community within this community. So I believe that she has the leadership skills and the talent to be able to serve alongside all you as you continue forward. So I really urge you all to really consider Manu Fo as your appointment here tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. May we have Eileen Castanetto?
Good evening, Mayor Manalo and honorable council members. I currently serve as county commissioner, and I'm here tonight in support of Manu Fo Anauai's appointment. Manu Fo is synonymous with service, integrity, and an unbreakable moral compass. Manu Fo has been unwavering in her work and advocacy to bring about thriving communities. She is the kind of leader who uplifts and unites, who works tenaciously to achieve our shared goals, who sees all of us as kapwa, and who understands the power of community. That it is only when we lift together that we rise together. Daly City is deserving of this kind of leadership. I believe in Manu Fo, and I hope you do too. Thank you all for your service.
Thank you very much. Ana Patero?
Good evening, members of the city council. My name is Ana Patero. I'm on the Fairfield City Unified School District governing board. I hear speaking as myself, as an individual. I'm here in support of Manu Fo Anauai. I believe she is a logical choice to be on this board as she garnered 6,800 votes. So in the interest of democracy, she did the work. She knocked on doors. She got the voice of the people who, other than all of you, was the next highest vote getter. So in the interest of democracy, in the interest of fairness, in the interest of 6,800 votes, I would urge you and implore you to appoint Manu Fo Anauai to sit as one of your colleagues. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Talavo Amuvave? Please come up. If that person is not here, then I'll move on to Reno Anauai.
Good evening, council. I stand tonight in full support of the appointment of a woman who brings 30-plus years of direct service and leadership in the community to the table tonight, trustee Manu Fo Anauai. Being that you all have endorsed her in the past, I took the time to pull from your statements of support in hopes that it will spark a reminder of what interested you in believing in her in the past. Councilmember De Giovanni, good to see you. You shared that Manu Fo is indeed a strong leader and a faithful public servant that you are on board with in our city. Thank you for your passion and commitment and heart in working tirelessly for our city and community. Love you, and it's always great to be in your presence. Mayor Manalo, you shared Manu Fo is a trusted leader. I thank her for her heart to serve and steadfast leadership. I've always felt your genuine intention to serve and give back to our community. Grateful for you. Mayor Sylvester, thank you for all that you do, Manu Fo, and all that you continue to do. You're a great leader in our city and indeed a hero. And former councilmember Buena Ventura shared, "I'm excited to support Manu Fo. She is the heart of Daly City, and I look forward to seeing her excel on city council." Can I just say one more thing?
We are, I'm so sorry, we're in a...
Okay, no worries.
Yeah, like...
I appreciate you guys. I hope that you can appoint Manu Fo.
Yeah, thank you so much. May we have Bevan Dufty, please?
Hello.
Good evening, mayor and council members. It's an honor to be here before you. I think I have something a little unique to offer because I hired Manu Fo Anauai to work with me when I was director of Neighborhood Services for Mayor Willie Brown. Fo is a force of nature. She has endless compassion. She stepped into very difficult situations in San Francisco, which is a pretty hotbed of a political place to be. And she always could find common ground and bring things to resolution. I'm so proud of the public service that Fo has continued to offer, and particularly here in Daly City. And I think she'd be a great council member. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. Pete Lang?
Members of the council, hi. Pete Lang, I had this kind of long speech written out, but due to the time, I'm just going to use my advocacy as a business manager. And I believe the members of my union, they have full confidence in my capacity to advocate for their best interests. And so that's why I'm here to, because I have full confidence in Fo's ability to represent all, including our union members, specifically ours, that reside and work in the counties of San Francisco and San Mateo. But I am here for full support for Manu Fo. Thank you very much for this opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you. Pat Murray?
Hi, my name is Pat Murray, and I'm with the South San Francisco Unified School District Board of Trustees. I'm speaking on behalf of myself, but I can tell you that every single one of my board members holds Manu Fo in high regard. This is Teri Chavez.
Thank you. We're doing a joint statement. My name is Teri Chavez. I'm trustee on San Mateo High School District. I speak for myself only, not the district, but I have high regards for Manu Fo as well.
The reason I wanted to come, and as soon as I heard that Manu Fo put her name in for the appointment, I asked her if I could come and speak. And it's not that she has been in, like, on every committee that I've ever gone to, or that she's held, like, in high regard by the governor of the state, by the county manager, and by the city that she represents, the district she represents. She did come in number four, I think, in the last election. But I wanted to come. Your mics are different than mine. I wanted to come.
Sorry. We're under time constraint because of all the interviews, council.
Okay. The reason I wanted to come was to speak about her character.
I'm so sorry. Thank you so much. We are, like, very tight. Yeah. At this point, I think that concludes our public comment. Thank you all that had spoke for public comment this evening. We will now move on to the drawing of the names for the interview. Thank you.
Good evening. And in advance, I'd like to apologize for any names that I massacre up here. Christopher Fritz. Manu Fu. John Cooper.
I'm sorry, is that the order, or is it...
So this, they're pulling the names into order of which the interviews will happen. So I think we, yeah.
Ricardo Cruz. Teresa Fapua. Peter Paul Ayferung. Tony Bayudin. Tony Bayudin.
It's right here, pal. You can look at the...
Martinian Cho.
And for purposes of the audience watching, the names are being typed out on both sides of our screen.
Daniel Vizkara. Christina Trujillo. Jason Angeles. Kristalyn Malbus. Anita Lim Fritz. Dolores Molina. Gabriella Maxtman. Musa Issa Nimja. Pardon me. Nim-Nij Ma. Thomas Norris. Teresa Proano. Teresa Proaño. Gail Samuelson Carpenter. Anil Sharestha. Tan or Tam Su. And that's it.
Thank you very much. Is that, does that conclude your drawing, madam city clerk?
It does, thank you.
Thank you. So at this time, madam city attorney, do you want to go over the processes? I think it says here, city manager and city attorney.
Yes. I had gone over sort of the general processes. At this point, the interviews will begin with the council in the order that the names were drawn. The questions for each council member has been presented to the council, and it is in the form that has been provided. And those are the prepared questions. Again, allotting 12 minutes per applicant.
Okay. Thank you very much, madam city attorney. Now, moving on to our interview process. At this time, calling up Mr. Christopher Fritz to please come up. Mr. Christopher Fritz. Calling one last time, and then we'll move on to the next candidate. All right. Thank you very much. Calling Manu Fo Liaki Anauai for interview. Madam city clerk, please let me know when you're ready. Very good. We'll do that for each process. Okay. All right. The first question is, "Why are you interested in serving as a Daly City council member? And what specific skills and experience do you bring to this potential position?"
Thank you, honorable mayor, for the question. Why am I running? I'm running because I decided, as a native San Franciscan, to raise my family here in Daly City. I am running because I am a servant leader that believes that I am a bridge. The experiences that I bring to the table are one of many years. For the past 10 years, I've been a board trustee on Jefferson Elementary School District, overseeing budget that actually administers all of the district duties. I also have been a mayoral aide, which was shared earlier by my previous director, mayor's office of Neighborhood Services. And in that role, I continued to oversee legislation, author it, and also served for project manager over Ocean Avenue repavement, the building of libraries, and also affordable senior housing on Mission Street. Why do I want to run for office? Why do I want to continue to serve in this capacity? Is because I believe that the city council should be leaders from the community that are experienced, that have rolled up their sleeves to ensure that the council is accessible to every single person in this city and is in this community. And that is what you get from me. That is what I brought to this community with all of my six children, and what I continue to hope to do.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Glenn Sylvester. And my question to you would be, what role do you believe local government should fulfill in people's lives?
Thank you for the question. I believe that the role of local government in fulfilling the needs and the services of this city are one to shape and navigate the systems that are here to provide quality services for the constituents of this city. I believe the purpose of the leadership of the council is to basically ensure that you are instituting, maintaining, and being strong thought partners in ensuring that there are policies in place that our communities can thrive. I also think that you need to be collaborative partners to ensure that you're not just working here within our city and our city departments, but reaching outside of our city, to North San Mateo County, to state legislators, state policymakers, and other resources that can ensure that our services can be of quality and can be accessible, and our delivery can be equitable.
Thank you. Councilmember De Giovanni, question number three. Describe your past community service or involvement and how that service has contributed positively to the Daly City community. Explain the relevance of this involvement to serving in the position of a Daly City council member.
Thank you for the question. When Big Lift was started, I was one of the founding members. Daly City became one of the first funded cities. And I believe that that's because of advocacy that came directly from here. I take great pride in using my voice in some of that advocacy, along with Kalima Salhoudin. That is some of the issues that I have faced head-on. When Head Start was losing its home, I came with many advocates that were wanting to ensure that Head Start did not lose their home at Cerro Monte del Rey. And we made sure that we worked closely with members that are sitting here, as well as the planning commission. When family members came to me and said that they couldn't afford summer programming, we built Camp Unity, and we made sure that Camp Unity stayed right here in Daly City. And for the past 14 years, we have served over 8,000 children. Free programming from 8:00 to 5:00 PM, charging no fees, ensuring that they are in a safe haven. We did that. And that is what we've done as a community. I'm a builder, I'm a partner, I'm a collaborator. And that's just a few of the things that we've been able to do right here in our great city. Thank you.
It's my turn. If an appointment is made to the vacant city council position, it will be effective for seven months until November 2024. What do you want to accomplish during this appointed term if you are selected as a Daly City council member?
Thank you, vice mayor, for the question. Seven months doesn't give you a lot of time to do many things. But I'm ambitious. I'm a dreamer. I'm filled with hope. And that's how we've been able to build things here in the city. The reality is, is I've done things with no money, with no resources, with no love. But because people in the trenches that have decided to jump in and take a leap of faith and jump in the fire to ensure that programs can happen here in our city and they don't move from Daly City, that's what I believe can happen in seven months. I've been having conversations with coaches in TRP, and I want to thank councilmember Sylvester, who leaned in. We had a coach having his kids play soccer on the street over there by TRP because the gates were closed. Those are the kind of conversations that I want to make accessible to the city council. We take city council to the streets. When I was at the mayor's office, we opened up the libraries every week to ensure that City Hall was in every neighborhood so people didn't have to come to City Hall. We practice open government. We practice open-door policy. And that's what I'm about. And that's what I dream for in the seven months, if you give me the opportunity to do so.
If you are appointed to the city council, please describe how you will work collaboratively to achieve consensus with other council members to address the important issues facing Daly City.
Thank you for the question. Nothing can be done if there's no respect. Nothing can be done if there's no willingness that lives at this dais. When I got on the school board 10 years ago, it was contentious. People were confrontational. We couldn't get anything done. Constant bickering. But I brought my culture into that space. Not I, but I modeled what I believed in. So as a Pacific Islander, we are rooted in respect, humility, and culture. And so I brought that into that space. And that was my expectation, that that was built. I believe that is needed here. I believe that level of harmony is needed here. I'm all about accountability, but I'm more about self-accountability. But I believe if we work in partnership, if we hold each other accountable, and we ensure that we keep our eyes focused on the people that we serve and that we're here to serve, not to be served, we can get things done. And that's what I believe.
Thank you very much. Would you like to provide a brief closing at this time?
Thank you. This is not a new race. In 2022, February 12, I launched my campaign, and many of you supported me. And I share that to say that seasons come and go, but Fo doesn't. I know my compass. I know who I serve, and I know who I belong to. They're here tonight. They're not just Pacific... They're not just Pacific Islanders. I am a Pacific Islander and I'm proud of it, but I serve everyone. And I can stand on that. But I don't feel I have an opportunity to get a nomination in tonight. I'm here to finish the race that I started for the 6,878 people that voted for me to ensure that I get into this council. My hope had been that I would have that consideration made. My hope is those very people will remember who to vote for in November for this special seat if I don't get it tonight. I'm here to serve. I should be given the opportunity to do so. I am qualified, I'm committed, I'm devoted, and my heart is here. My family has built roots here. And I deserve a shot. But there's so many things happening in the background that is keeping me from that seat. So if I don't win tonight, I am so grateful for the opportunity to take to the mic, to let every person know that supported me, that donated to my campaign, and let it be known, I am the only one that ran this race. 25 other individuals are putting in application and never paid the payment in 2022, and I mean no disrespect. It takes courage to put your application in. But I paved, I hit that pavement in 2022. So thank you, thank you, thank you for your leadership. And I hope that you will remember my name when it comes time to deliberate. Manufo Liangim Anoi, a mother of six in Daly City, running for a seat as a decision maker with all of you. God bless.
Moving on to our next interview is John Cooper.
Thank you for this opportunity. I actually want to withdraw because the lady that came before me helped me years ago when I had a problem with the school board. And she was the only one that helped me. So I'd like to withdraw and put my support behind this lady.
Ricardo Cruz.
Similar to John, I'd also like to withdraw. Myself, my wife, and my kids voted for us.
Thank you very much. Teresa Faupoua. I'll start off with the first question. Why are you interested in serving as a Daly City Councilmember? And what specific skills and experience do you bring to this potential position?
I want to thank you for the opportunity. Thank you for allowing me as one of the candidate to be here today. Thank you for the question, Madam Mayor, the rest of the council. The reason why I want to run for this position is with my qualifications of serving on certain boards, of understanding the need of Daly City, the needs of every board that I served, puts me in a situation that I need to do something. I'm humbly here to be here today to show you that my qualifications comes with commitment, adaptability, and to serve. Thank you.
Thank you so much. My question, what role do you believe local government should fulfill in people's lives?
The roles of a local government that we should have is that we already have in place. And that's all services for the people. Healthcare, education, public health, public safety. And those areas need to be addressed. And to be a servant. I'm sorry, lost my thoughts. My sister Phoe has taken every cheer there is in the room. And I stand before her humbly, humbly, that if any of us who ever make the seat tonight, that they will be able to do what's right for the people, what's right for the seat, and not to look for any platform. So going back to the question is, it's important to have these services and the government is there to serve for us and for us to be able to be available, to have these services be accessible to everybody that needs help. And not everybody in Daly City, it's up there. Some of them need the help, and some of us cannot identify it. But having those services available and be accessible to everybody, it's the most important part.
Question number three. Describe your past community service or involvement and how that service contributed positively to the Daly City community. Please explain the relevance of this involvement to serving in the position of a Daly City Councilmember.
I belong to Pacific Islands together, as you are all aware of. When COVID hits, we were told that the city was going to shut down all the food harvests that were able to serve and provide meals to some of the community. With the resilience of our Madam Chair at the time, she approached the council and say, we're not going to close, we're not going to shut down our food harvest, we will continue to do this. We were the only organization at the time to provide that service for our community. The line from Jefferson all the way down to Dukens at the time for individuals that were in need of food, that were in need of any produce because everything was closed at the time. From that till today, we continue to serve the community through food harvest. Countless other community service that I have done, but I say for this community service, it really humbles my heart because I continue to see the same individuals that were in that line. The smile they have on their face when we hand them food. The time they are able to park there countless times in need of wanting food. So my experience is to serve and to provide food for somebody that needs, it humbles my heart to serve. Thank you.
All right. Number four. If an appointment is made to the vacant city council position, it will be effective for about seven months until November 2024. What do you want to accomplish during this appointment term if you are selected as a Daly City Councilmember?
Well, seven months, it's very crucial. What I want to accomplish first is to gain a teamwork from us sitting on that seat, to gain the trust, to build teamwork. And then looking at what's prioritized that the city needs, what the community needs. In seven months, there's a lot to be done, but short of time. But we prioritize and we look at the timeline. What does the city needs within the timeline? What do the people need within that timeline? But my main thing is to build connections with who I sit with on that seat. Thank you.
Thank you. Question number five. If you were appointed to the city council, please describe how you will work collaboratively to achieve consensus with other council members to address the important issues facing Daly City.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I bullet down some of the most important thing that I feel that is necessary for this question, and some of them is building teamwork, efforts amongst the council, understanding each other's strengths and needs, listening attentively and effectively, be open-minded of ideas. No idea is a bad idea. Respect each other's opinion. Not thinking selfishly is not about me, it's about the people who we serve. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Would you like to provide a brief closing statement at this time?
Yes, I'd like to thank you for this opportunity. Even if I don't make it, I'm glad that I'm here to represent myself. And I also wanted to congratulate all the candidates that are here tonight in hoping that one of us will sit in that seat. And may we continue to strive together as a team to build the city of Daly City. Thank you.
Next, for the interview, Peter Paul Ifurong, please come up.
Councilmembers, Mayor.
Welcome. The first question.
I would like to withdraw.
Okay.
Only on the, I've never met Manufo. But I would say that I have never seen so much passion from an individual. I feel that the community is best served. I feel it would be a disservice for me to take that position from somebody that has that much passion. So I would like to, again, withdraw. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Next up, Tony Bayuden, please come up.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, councilmembers. Thank you.
Thank you. The first question I have is, why are you interested in serving as a Daly City Council member? And what specific skills and experience do you bring to this potential position?
As a Daly City resident who went to Westmore High School, I'm a native of the city. I care greatly for the people of the city because my friends, my family, and I grew up here. I want to give back to the community what they've given me. I want to thank the city council for establishing the Daly City iHelp app. Through that technology, we are able to report and have the council and the city respond to it. That is basic government at its best. I think my previous work has prepared me for this, and I've had the opportunity to serve on the Jefferson Elementary School District Citizen Oversight Committee, as well as serving on the Daly City Personnel Board. The reason I'm interested at this point is that I'm a great listener. As a listener, I'm able to look at issues. I am fair, I am objective, and I take everyone's viewpoint into consideration. For me, I want you all to know that if appointed to the council, that I will work with you collaboratively. I've had the opportunity to work with the Chamber of Commerce and Neighborhood Associations on a number of issues. Thank you.
Thank you so much. What role do you believe local government should fulfill in people's lives?
Okay. I truly believe that government is a force of good. In my work, I've seen government help constituents, whether it's to fix a pothole, streetlights, getting a passport, or healthcare. It's about connecting people with the services that we provide. My work for the past decade has been focused on connecting people with the services they need. For example, as I said, potholes, I would connect them to organizations that would deal with that. Passports, I had a constituent that needed to fly out of the country. Working with people, I've made connections, able to help people. Also, like, streetlights can be down in a neighborhood, we'll get a call. I will try to make the phone calls to make the connection to get it done. Someone needs help with healthcare, I will do my best people to connect the people needed for this. Thank you.
Question number three. Describe your past community service or involvement and how that service has contributed positively to the Daly City community. Please explain the relevance of this involvement to serving in the position of a Daly City Councilmember. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Community service has been really important to me, whether it's taking part in a Daly City cleanup, giving turkeys away, a toy drive, or supporting nonprofits that actually are there. The importance is being there and showing the support of your community. To me, that's what community service is about. I volunteered at food banks. I taught financial education to students and adults and worked with senior groups. I've walked rallies in support of numerous groups and causes. I've personally, I live at the top of the hill, if I see a homeless person out there, I've given blankets. I've gone out there and tried to assist until assistance comes to them. So community is very important to me, and I truly support it. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, number four. If appointment is made to the vacant city council position, it will be effective for about seven months until November 2024. What do you want to accomplish during this appointed term if you are selected as a Daly City Councilmember?
For the next seven months, more than anything, I want to be a listener. I want to listen to staff, to my colleagues on the council, and most especially to our constituents. I want to know the council priorities and how I fit in and focus on ensuring we have a healthy and sustainable budget, to ensure the services the city provides, including public safety, public works, parks, and other infrastructure that are sustainable. I'm not interested in radical change. The one thing that I think that is important is being present for our residents. So if I get a phone call or someone needs help, really helping with city staff and being on top of constituent issues is most important to me. Serving the people is a focus I want to contribute my time to. Thank you.
If you are appointed to the city council, please describe how you will work collaboratively to achieve consensus with other council members to address the important issues facing Daly City.
Building consensus. Will take thoughtful and meaningful discussions with my colleagues on the council. I'm willing to serve on any subcommittees, to work with each one of you, and create policies that benefit the residents of Daly City. At the end of the day, it's about continuing to provide the best services we can with the tax dollars we have. I want to ensure our residents to feel secure, listened to, and appreciated. I want to be a champion for Daly City and for the residents to feel proud to call Daly City their home.
Thank you. Would you like to provide a brief closing statement at this time?
Yes, yes. Thank you for allowing me to be part of this. I know you've got about 20 something applicants, but I want to reinforce to you that I am ready to start working on day one. I'm ready to work with you, ready to collaborate. I'm really here to work with you on the issues that our residents deem most important. Thank you.
Next up, we have Martin Yan Choi. Please come up.
And hello, fellow Daly City citizens. Thank you for the opportunity to be here.
Thank you. The first question we have is, why are you interested in serving as a Daly City Council member? And what specific skills and experience do you bring to this potential position?
Okay. Thank you for the question. First of all, I want to take a moment to give a shout out to Manufo. You're truly inspirational. And I actually think it's people like that that are motivating me to stand here. Representation. I'm a first-generation immigrant. I know the path that it takes to fit into a to fit into a community. And I've lived across America in different neighborhoods. And Daly City is the one city that I've lived in and I've moved to, and it felt like home to me. And so feeling that sense of safety is more of a, I feel obligated, like, I want to give back to the city that's honestly been the gateway to my sense of a home. Skill sets that I believe I possess. I'm currently a nurse practitioner. I specialize in cardiology. And I believe in the fundamentals of healthcare and wellness. And to me, healthcare really needs to start from the bottom up. Let's not wait for people to get sick before we do things. We prevent diseases, we save costs, and that starts with building sidewalks with lights on them. Starts with building parks that people can actually go and use. Starts with actually, you know, having resources in the community that our kids can go out and start knowing that playing outside is safe, is good. Thank you.
Thank you very much. What role do you believe local government should fulfill in people's lives?
I believe government should really work as a collaborator and a facilitator. I don't really believe that government should do everything for us. I think government should set the infrastructure and give us a platform and kind of give us the support when and if we need it. Trust the people that we can run things on our own, but when we need that help, you should be there for us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Question number three. Describe your past community service or involvement and how that service has contributed positively to the Daly City community. Explain the relevance of this involvement to serving in the position of a Daly City council member, please. Thank you.
Thank you for the question. I haven't specifically served on a government official or like a council for the city of Daly City. However, I was the, sorry. I'm really nervous right now. This is, I'm like a fish out of water, so please bear with me. I was the legislative co-chair for the California Social Nurse Practitioners. And I really took that position because I wanted to understand exactly the people that were making decisions that directly affected my day-to-day life at work. And so taking that position gave me a kind of like a, oh, okay, this is, you know, just calling a city member and say, hey, my representative, like, hey, by the way, these are the issues that are affecting us, and I want you to kind of be aware of these things. Kind of opened this pathway to say, okay, this is how citizens can actually collaborate with government. Government is not an enemy. We are supposed to work together. The sense of polarizing left and right, I just think is just a lot of misunderstanding. If people just understand each other, we can actually accomplish a lot. And so I hope that that experience from that can give me the tools I need to continue to grow and serve and honestly learn from you guys. There are not many people that look like me, for one. And two, my age group that are in government. Why not? There's a disconnect there. Right? So I want to, by all means, I'm not running here to say, you know, there are more than other candidates that are qualified than me. I know that for a fact. But the very fact that I'm up here today, I really hope I can inspire some younger person behind me to do the same for the next election. Thank you.
All right. Number four. If an appointment is made to the vacant Daly City council position, it will be effective for about seven months until November 2024. What do you want to accomplish during this appointment term if you are selected as a Daly City council member?
Honestly? We have a beautiful BART station. And if you walk down there during the bustling or commuting hours, it's kind of desolate. Why is that? I think that's the first question we really need to ask ourselves. Why are people not coming to our public sectors and bringing business to our local business? Right? So I would honestly put out some surveys out in the BART station, right? And just track that data. We are living in 2024. Why are we not leveraging technology to actually promote some of these fundamental things that drives our system, uh, city and our systems? Secondly, honestly, there is an intersection between D Street and Junipero that merges onto the highway. There is no walkway path at that intersection. When you get to D Street, if you're coming up to Junipero and say you're going on to Cerro Monte Mall, you have to go around into the BART park before you can go and continue up on Junipero. Just put a walkway there. Just put a walkway there, make it easy for people to walk. More people will walk. The more people walk, the healthier they are. It saves you dollars down the road on healthcare costs. That's the way I look at it. Again, for me, I'm really coming from like, what can I do fundamentally to really promote the health of Daly City citizens? Make it easier for people to commute. Make it easier for people to walk around and feel safe at night or in the evening. Make it easy for us to go use public parks. That's it. Thank you.
If you are appointed to the city council, please describe how you will work collaboratively to achieve consensus with other council members to address the important issues facing Daly City.
Yeah, thank you for that question. I think for me, it's really important to understand people and really understand their perspective. Don't just have a conversation. Be of, like, actively have a conversation with somebody. So for me, starting from day one, understanding, okay, what are the goals that the city as a government wants to achieve? And does it, does these goals or do these goals really align with what the people want? So that, that's honestly, that's why we like us to start and like, really understand how each and every one of you works. Okay, how do you interact with your constituents? Okay, let's leverage that. What's more effective for one candidate might not be more, just as effective for the other person. So kind of having a collaborative sense and working together as a unit, I think that's a very, very powerful tool. Working separately, like, oh, no, you do this, you do this. Not at all. If you come together as a unit, you can accomplish a lot.
Thank you. Would you like to provide a brief closing statement at this time?
I just want to say thank you, honestly. And thank you to, you know, all the other candidates. And I'm really proud. It's not easy to, first of all, believe and trust that, you know, you have what it takes. And like I said before, to me, it was just being here today to show representation, to, in a sense, honestly, commit my loyalty to Daly City. That this is the one city that I moved to and I lived in, and I feel at home. And I want to make it better. And I want to really hold that name that says the gateway to the peninsula and really have it mean something. So, thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Daniel Viscara. Please come up.
Hello.
Hello. The first question we have for you is, why are you interested in serving as a Daly City council member? And what specific skills and experience do you bring to this potential position?
So I wanted to join city council because I love this city. I'm born and raised here. I still hang out with my friends that I've grown up with. And I've looked around at the campaign posters, and I've always wanted to get involved, but never kind of had the courage to or just the push for it. And so when I saw this vacancy, I realized that one of the things that I'm a big proponent of is making things a lot more accessible, making things a lot less intimidating. And even in my work, because I would consider myself an auditor at heart. I like asking questions. I ask a lot of questions. And for me, getting to the root of something means that you have to be able to sit in uncomfortable spaces, talking to other people and understanding what different priorities are for different people and trying to figure out, how do we get everyone a little bit further ahead? And so this city council position for me is an opportunity to kind of bridge the gap with a lot of different services amongst the city, but also hopefully provide, or inspire, just like the previous person who was up here said, inspire more people kind of like my age and younger to get involved. That it doesn't have to be this thing that is, you know, you have to sign up for, you have to read about it. Like, no, if you want to be involved in your city, do it. And I think that we're doing okay, but we can do a lot more. So, yeah, that's why I'm here.
Thank you so much. Can you tell us, what role do you believe local government should fulfill in people's lives?
Yeah, I think people have said it already. I think it's about services. But I think more than that, it's about providing a lot more support. For example, like, trying to get my water heater fixed. I had just kind of inherited the house from my mom. I talked to my friends, and it's very kind of like convoluted to how much information you get blasted with as far as like how to take steps to do permitting or who do you talk to? What questions do you even need to ask? And I've made phone calls to the city of Daly City, the assessor's office, the county, even our local government, just trying to get a clear answer about how I should approach things. And it was always muddy, and it took days for me to even get a simple answer is, what do I need to make sure I am by the book getting a water heater fixed? And so when I think of government, and even places that I used to work for, like large tech firms, is that information is usually just kind of kept siloed, and it's very difficult to kind of get the information you want. And I think government should be the opposite of that. It should be open. You should know who to go to, who to call, what the steps are. If I have a stupid question, yeah, I should be able to go to any one of you or anyone in the city and ask a question without feeling like, oh, my gosh, this is too overwhelming. So I hope that by being able to represent maybe a younger generation, that we can start to get more ideas on the table about how to be more engaging with the citizens.
Guess that's me. Thank you. Describe your past community service or involvement and how that service has contributed positively to the city of Daly City community. Please explain the relevance of this involvement to serving in the position of a Daly City council member. Thank you.
So I haven't officially like volunteered in anything. I'll be honest, I don't even know what I can do. And if being up here has kind of shown me anything is that people want to help the city or want to be a part of it. And I don't think there are mechanisms in place for people to engage and give their service to the city other than just writing a check. Like, when I used to work in large tech firms or large banks, I would always ask the question of, what are we doing for our local, like, the places we work at? I think that if you are a large company and you have employees or you operate out of Daly City, you should be giving back to the city. You should be employing more people from Daly City. And if the skill set is not high enough, what are we doing to help get our citizens the skill set to get these higher-paying jobs or to get more involved? And one thing I always was a big proponent of in every work that I went into was, how can we give more of ourselves rather than just writing a check? How do we actually like set up programs so that people can participate without, you know, going to the food bank? I think we have a lot of skill sets, especially with the younger generation. And as we start to see this kind of divide in technology, that we need more engagement now more than ever to make these services fit for what's going to come in the future.
All right. If an appointment is made to the vacant Daly City council position, you'll have about seven months from now to November. What do you want to accomplish during this appointed term if you are selected as a Daly City council member?
I've been thinking about this since I was sitting down. And I think the best metric that I can hope for is more engagement. I think it's as far as a trackable, measurable success. For me, I would love to see more people out voting or getting involved or just having more connection to government. And so as far as like numeric values, I would love to see that in the next election. Hopefully get more people running as well. Yeah. Thank you.
If you are appointed to city council, please describe how you will work collaboratively to achieve consensus with other council members to address the important issues facing Daly City.
Yeah. So my work is always, I've always worked in compliance and regulatory compliance and audit. And I'm very familiar with working with different priorities, different groups and priorities. I know, like, for instance, I've worked in the privacy space and trying to understand, you know, different priorities from different teams is always going to clash, and it's always difficult. But one thing I've learned, working in these firms, is that everyone wants to do the right thing, but everyone has their own agenda. And I think the important thing is listening and understanding what people are actually saying versus what they're trying to do. Because when you look and can, if you leverage kind of what everyone's trying to do, I think there's a lot of common ground that we can get to, to get everyone what they need. And so for me, it's about trying to increase the dialogue between various groups and also various age groups. Because I think it's, it's easy to dismiss things that you're not aware of or you're not familiar with. But I think that's why it's more important now than ever to be out here, be more present, be more representative of different perspectives, and then just talking to people and understanding. I think we can get more collaboration if we just listen, and excuse my language, cut the BS. Because there's a lot of like work that needs to get done. And I think if you just listen, you can get a lot done quicker.
Thank you. Would you like to provide a brief closing statement at this time?
Yeah. So again, I'm born and raised in Daly City. I went to OLM, and I've kind of seen this city changed for the better. But I hope that, you know, I think, as I say, my generation, but like, I really feel like now we're coming to a point where I hope that my generation can really step in and start to take these positions and really get more involved. And I think in order to do that, we need to get more. It just starts with one person getting involved and then spreading that word and making it easier for the next person to come in. And I hope that even for myself, me and my husband are here. I represent, I guess, the LGBT community. And I hope that even for queer kids out there, that this doesn't have to be this formal button-tie-down thing that you do. If you want to be part of the city, if you want to give to the city, just do it. just do it. And, you know, hopefully me, my husband, just being here inspires some, again, another queer kid to come forward and help the city, or, you know, help where they came from. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Christina Trojillo. Please come up.
Thank you for having me.
Thank you for being here. The first question we have is, why are you interested in serving as a Daly City council member? And what specific skills and experience do you bring to this potential position?
Yes, Madam Mayor. So, I've only been in Daly City for about seven years now. I moved into the Bay Shore District when my son was two years old. I live in low income housing, and so, and that demographic, you know, I found it very hard actually to integrate into Daly City. I tried really, I wanted to be a part of, you know, what was going on in the city, in my community, in the school district, and it was just, it was really unwelcoming, let's just say. My youngest now is in Jefferson Elementary School District, it's a completely different experience. I don't really understand the segregation between the two in Daly City. I am, you know, very much interested in being a positive influence and trying to, you know, break that. You know, we're rooted here in Daly City, we're all friends, we all know each other, and you're an outsider, you, you know, you don't have a place. Is kind of how I felt, you know, and how I felt in my own community where I live. But when I step outside of that community, just a few blocks down the street, it's completely a different atmosphere. And I think that's the community that a lot of people in here are talking about, and the one that I've just recently joined and I'm happy to be a part of, but I'd want to bring that back to Midway and Bay Shore. And, you know, into other parts, you know, of the city and make it 100%, you know, communal.
Thank you so much. My question is, what role do you believe local government should fulfill in people's lives?
I believe that the local government should bring services, resources, and education to the local community. We should be able to, you know, come to you for information, you know, guidance, funding, you know, and, you know, legislative, legislative things that are going on within California and our local communities, you know, should be sought, I think, full fold. You know, the composting laws came into effect a couple of years ago. And again, in my community, we don't compost. For some reason, we're left out. Working in the school district, and I've worked in the hospitals. And for some reason, they're left out of some of the sustainability laws and rules that fall into place. And I don't understand that either, because in my mind, education should be sought through the schools and through our health clinics, and they should be the ones who are representative of what we should be doing. And if they're not held accountable, how is everybody else held accountable? Why do restaurants have to give you compostable stuff, but you get plastic at the school and in the hospital? Don't make sense to me.
Thank you.
Aye. Question number three, describe your past community service or involvement, and how that service has contributed positively to the Daly City community. Please explain the relevance of this involvement to serving in the position of a Daly City council member. Thank you.
Well, unfortunately, I don't have any real community service experience that I could speak to. Like I said, I've had a hard time integrating into the community that I live in. However, I have been substituting through Jefferson Elementary School District, and I'm right now waiting for my classified position to be finalized. And so, you know, since I've been working there this year, I've been promoting sustainability and zero waste and working with Central Kitchen to change things, because I've been working in food service. So trying to get more, you know, compostable things coming through the kitchen, you know, fighting, you know, against budget, but, you know, little changes that I can make, make me feel good. So when I see aluminum containers and paper boats, I'm happy.
Thank you.
If appointed to the Daly City council for the vacant position, it will be effective for about seven months until November 2024. What do you want to accomplish during this time, if appointed, if you're selected as a Daly City council member?
Well, I think you kind of noticed, my focus is on sustainability and zero waste. So I would like to clean up Daly City. I would like to see a lot of this illegal dumping gone. I would like to see a resource recovery area, either a park or a day, once a month, twice a week, whatever it takes to make sure that people have a place to take stuff that they don't want, and we can give it away, reuse it, recycle it. But all this illegal dumping costs us way too much money. I see mattresses on the side of the road every other day, and they constantly dump in front of Jefferson Elementary School, school where my little child goes to, and I've been seeing that for three years, driving past it, taking him to GP and now to GW. And I, I'm just, I'm just, I just, I want to cry, I want to scream every time I pull up to the school. It's just, it drives me crazy, and I can't do anything about it. But if I sit there, I can do something about it, and I want to make a difference.
If you are appointed to city council, please describe how you will work collaboratively to achieve consensus with other council members to address the important issues facing Daly City.
I'm a team player, I want to make things happen. The only way you make things happen is by creating bridges where they're broken. So, you know, talking, working with people, getting to know people, you know, I'm, I'm really good at communicating, but you know, just getting in front of the right people or being with the right, you know, ears sometimes is a little harder to do when you don't know the right people. So I think, you know, collaborating with this group would be easy and, you know, very fruitful.
Thank you. Would you like to provide a brief closing statement at this time?
Just to say thank you for your time and your ear, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Excuse me. Number 11, Jason Angeles has withdrawn at this time. Moving to Kristalyn Malbus, please come up. Kristalyn Malbus. Last call for Kristalyn Malbus. Now moving on to Anita Lim Fritz, please come up. This will be the last call, so Anita Lim Fritz. Okay. Moving on to Dolores Molina. Dolores Molina. This is the last call for Dolores Molina. Moving on to Gabriella Maxman. Gabriella Maxman. This will be the last call for Gabriella Maxman. Okay, thank you very much. Now, moving on to Musa Isa Nijame. Please come up.
Hi, good evening. Thank you very much for the chance for me to be here.
Good evening. The first question we have is, why are you interested in serving as a Daly City council member? And what specific skills and experience do you bring to this potential position?
Yes. Well, this started when I came in 1992 to visit my sister when she got married to a successful businessman. So that time, we had to stay with them in Daly City. And I asked my brother-in-law, because like I was a child, like I wanted to learn a lot of things, I wanted to ask a lot of questions. I asked him, why did you select Daly City to live in, in time your investments in San Francisco? So he said, well, we have three reasons for that, because Daly City is even to, next to San Francisco. It's more affordable to live in, and it's more safe, and less traffic. And that was, I was checking what exactly his answers. I was watching my neighbor, they used to sleep the nighttime when it's hot weather, they used to leave their window or door open, and because it's safe. And correctly, it's affordable, because we used to live in nice apartment for 675 a month. And there was no traffic, I was checking how the traffic in San Francisco, how traffic in Daly City. After the vacation ended, I went back to my country and I when I finished my study, master's degree in accounting, I came back, I asked my brother-in-law, how's Daly City? Why did you move out? Well, he said, Daly City is not anymore affordable like before, not safe like before, and it's traffic as bad as San Francisco. So I did put in my mind that I would love to do something to
Sorry, the time is up for the first question, and we'll be moving on to question number two. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Sylvester.
My question, sir, is, what role do you believe local government should fulfill in people's lives?
Well, local government need to be closer a little bit to people, to listen to them, to address the issues, and see what suggestion they do, or what are thinking to improve the, anything like to, to solve the issues. I believe like the most important thing that we are be able to do is to be close to people. Yes, yes, sir.
Thank you.
I had to make a quick answer, make sure the time.
Question number three, describe your past community service or involvement, and how that service has contributed positively to the Daly City community. Please explain the relevance of this involvement to serving in the position of a Daly City council member. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. Well, I always like to be clear, I didn't do too much. The, the, the best thing I was able to do is to donate plasma, blood cells. I thought that was the best thing I can serve, I help with, is to give part of my body to help someone that their health need to recover. Well, I would love to, if I would saved more, I, the only other things I did, I was volunteer in the, the dining room for people that they were in need, that I served them, I did feel very happy to be a volunteer. And I am looking forward, if I can do the most I can do to serve our community.
All right, number four. If appointment is made to the vacant Daly City council position, it will be effective for seven months from now till November 2024. What do you want to accomplish during this appointment, appointed term if you are selected as a Daly City council member?
Well, thank you, this question. Well, exactly seven months is very short time. I would love to be within the seven month. Try to learn from the council members, how they are serving this community, how they are spending all this time helping. Well, and within the seven months, I would love to find out, why did you, Daly City became less affordable, less safe, and more traffic? If we can find what's the reason for all these issues, probably we can find solutions.
If you are appointed to city council, please describe how you will work collaboratively to achieve consensus with other council members to address the important issues of Daly City.
Well, I believe I have very free, enough free time, and I am a good listener, especially I speak three languages. I feel like I have some good ability to serve, if anytime I will be needed, I will be available. And I would love to do anything to do that, to perform that, yes.
Thank you. And would you like to provide a brief closing statement at this time?
Well, thank you very much. I'm sorry, because I was a little bit nervous, but I feel very happy for the opportunity that I talk about my thoughts, and I'm looking forward, if I will have the chance to be selected, I will just give all my time or my ability to help and be active, ma'am, council member. Thank you very much.
Thank you. May we have Thomas Nuresh up, please?
Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of the city council.
Good evening. The first question we have is, why are you interested in serving as a Daly City council member? And what specific skills and experience do you bring to this potential position?
Thank you for the question. I would like to serve on the city council because I've been seeing, I've been serving this city and this community for probably the last 40 years in a variety of capacities. Two minutes is not going to do it for me, unfortunately, I'm going to do the best that I can, but I, I think that I have gathered experience through all of the things that I've been able to do, that I can bring to this board and, and work in a way that we can move the city forward. I have spent probably almost 39 years on the city's personnel board here. So I know what goes on in the city, I know what all the jobs are, I know what people do here. Probably every description that is a job description has come before me, I've reviewed it and probably passed them all. So I, I know that I can come into this seat and know how the city is operating, what people do here. And I think I can hit the ground running as far as that goes. I have my experience in the educational part of Daly City, as far as having been a trustee of the high school district for 33 years. During the time that I was on that high school board, if you graduated from any of our schools between 1981 and 2014, you were on my watch. 50,000 students graduated during that period of time while I was part of that board and oversaw the education. So I, I think that, I, I know that component of the community. I also know the business side of this community as well, having served 10 years as the director of the Chamber of Commerce, one year as president, and negotiated this first city contract between the city and the Chamber of Commerce, which united the two and made the, the community better. So I, I think I can bring something to the council that would be valuable.
Thank you very much. What role do you believe local government should fulfill in people's lives?
Local government, if we're talking about just the city of Daly City, is one part of it. But local government is not just us here in Daly City. It is our school districts, our high school districts, our elementary school districts, other communities that are around us, the county, and all of these, all of these entities make up government. And the government that basically provides everything for our community is the hub. We provide all of the important things, safety, public service, police, fire, infrastructure. But we don't just do it in a vacuum, we have to work collaboratively with our neighbors and with the other people that are providing services to our community as well, like the school districts, because, you know, we serve the same constituents. And so I think that government working together with other entities that serve the same population get a lot more done. And I, I think that's a very important part of serving the community, and I think that that's what government is really all about, collaborating with other people that are also working for the betterment of our community.
Question number three, describe your past community service or involvement, and how that service has contributed positively to the Daly City community. Please explain the relevance of this involvement to serving in the position of a Daly City council member. Thank you.
Thank you. As I've already indicated, on the high school board, I, I've contributed by overseeing high school education. I just finished a four-year term on the community college board, which has provided an outlet for all of our students coming out of here to go to community college. And while on that board, my colleagues and I voted to give free community college to students of Samhail County. And that was a big And that was a big deal because a lot of people can't afford an education. And being on that board and working collaboratively with them and with our legislators and with our administrators, we pulled it all together. And I think that was huge, being able to provide free education to people that wanted to go to college and move forward in their lives. Additionally, I have served on the Board of Directors of Seaton Medical Center, having been chairman of that board for the last four years of the, of the hospital's existence prior to it being sold. And during that period of time, I led the hospital board through the bankruptcies. We've appeared here before you, before the county of San Mateo. And working with you and with our supervisors, we're able to hold the hospital together and keep it here. And there's a lot of backstories that people don't understand. How close this hospital was 30 days from being closed. We were able to hold off corporate, to allow us, to allow our community people in the cities and in the counties to do what we could do to be able to find an avenue out for the hospital. And thank goodness, we still have the hospital. Those are some of the things that I've been able to do. And in leadership roles, not just being on a board or being part of it. I've led these organizations and I know how to do that.
So if appointment is made today, it will be effective for about seven months from now till November 2024. What do you hope to accomplish during this time if appointed?
What I would like to accomplish basically is to be able to take the seat and learn all of you and learn how to work together collaboratively with you. I was here and you know, I know what goes on in Daly City, a lot of us do. I was here when the mayor gave her state of the city speech a few weeks ago. And all of the things that Daly City does is really incredible. I think that most of those things are, you know, are things that need to continue. And a lot of them have to be grown. And I would like to be able to learn more about all of those. As I indicated, I understand the workings of the city because of the departments that I've been able to interface with on personnel. I would like to go and meet with all of the department heads personally and find out what their needs are, what, what's important to them and how to make the city work better. And really find where my place is with the rest of you to try and pull us all together and see if we can continue to work for the benefit of these people who live in Daly City, who are our neighbors.
If you are appointed to the city council, please describe how you will work collaboratively to achieve consensus with other council members to address the important issues facing Daly City.
I think that if you were to talk to anyone that knows me, that has sat on any boards with me over these many, many years, the one thing that they probably will say about me is that I am a person that tries to find consensus. I am a collaborator. It's so important to me to be able to work with my colleagues and, and find a way to make things happen, to be able to speak with unity as a board with one voice. That's so important because you know, our community sees us and they see what we do. And we, we need to, we need to put together our, our absolute best face forward and, and make sure that what we do here in Daly City is for the best interest of the people. And I, I know that everyone does that. We try, but sometimes it's hard. So that's what, that's what I think I bring. I think I bring my, my, my personal skills, my personality, my ability to work with people and to try and make things better in a collaborative fashion. So we can speak together again with one voice as leaders of the city.
Thank you. Would you like to provide a brief closing statement at this time?
Thank you, I appreciate it. I, I moved here with my family when I was nine years old. That was a long time ago. They bought their first doleger home here and you know, that was the first thing moving out of San Francisco. I went to public schools here. I established my law practice here 45 years ago. And I practiced law in this community, serving the people of, of Daly City in North County for many, many years now. But I've also been involved in the business side of it and I think that's important. I think it's important that I share the fact that when the Unipro Serra Corridor just sat vacant for years and years and years, three of my partners and I decided we want to build a small building up there. We bought the land, the city said, no, this is redevelopment area. You can't build three stories, it's got to be at least five. So we built seven. We built and owned the JS Office Building at 2171 for 11 years. And it was the first successful project up there. And it was a leap of faith on our part to put our time, effort and money into it. And it then kicked off redevelopment up there. And what we see up there now is what happened. A very, very vibrant area of our community with the movie theaters and the restaurants. And hopefully at the end of the block, which is the opposite end of where we started, we will have our hotel and our community center there. So those are the kind of things that I think are important, being involved in the community at a variety of levels. And I, I've tried to always do that. And if I've given an opportunity, I will continue to do so. Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Next up, we have Teresa Perano. Please come up. Our first question is, why are you interested in serving as a Daly City council member? And what specific skills and experience do you bring to this potential position?
Thank you. First, I would like, before I start, my ears are a little congested and that's something that I'm dealing with. So if I'm not loud enough, can you let me know? And if I can't hear you, I'll ask you to speak just a little louder, okay? So why am I interested in serving? I've been serving the city of Daly City for, let's see here, I was born here. Yeah, I was born at Mary's Health in San Francisco at the time. I moved and then I came to live in Daly City with my seven brothers and sisters. I grew up here, I went to school here, I volunteer here. I'm married, I have three children I raised in Daly City. I have six grandchildren and I volunteer. And whenever I was asked, gee, you should run for council. And I would say, no, I think I just like volunteering and do what I like to do to serve my community. And so that's what I've been doing. I've been working in Daly City for the last 25 years. And I feel that my skills and experience in serving the community and also serving as on the Parks and Recreation and later on the Planning Commission has served me in helping me understand what the community, what my community needs. And I feel that I can help.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
What role do you believe local government should fulfill in people's lives?
When we talk about local government, let's say we're talking right now at the council level. The council level, you are the voice, right? You work with our city departments and you listen to our community and what the people of Daly City, what they need, what they need for their children, what they need for education, for housing, for the businesses, the businesses in Daly City. And what the community needs for recreation and for healthcare. That is what our city, our council people, that's what you're doing for the people of Daly City. You're also the extension to the people, to the other government, local governments, San Mateo County, the state of California, other cities, so that you can see what else is happening in the cities surrounding Daly City and how we can work as partners, what we can do to better our city. You can get that information, you bring it back, you work with your departments, you work together and we make a difference.
Question number three. Describe your past community service or involvement and how that service has contributed positively to the Daly City community.
Thank you, I had to write that down. So being a part of the Hillside Homeowners Association.
Excuse me, Teresa, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
Pardon me. Is this an extension part?
Of the extension part, thank you.
Pardon me, pardon me.
Okay.
So please explain the relevance of this involvement to serving in the position of a Daly City council member. Sorry about that.
I had to write that down. So as a part of the Hillside Homeowners Association, my duty was to work together and to see what was important for our neighborhood. Okay, so that's one. Daly City Host Lions Club, I've been part of them, part of the, at Daly City Host Lions, serving the community for vision care, for healthcare and hearing. Friends of Seaton Foundation, I served with them. And what we did was we helped raise money to help the babies, okay? So when baby, women were having babies and they needed help with the, with clothing, with help through there, through the Friends of Seaton Foundation. So I did that. Part of the Daly City Coma Chamber of Commerce. How important are our businesses, right? Our small and large businesses. And I feel that that has given me a little insight on what we have in our community as well. And North Peninsula Food Pantry and Dining Center. I served over 17 years before they closed. We served hot meals. We also gave food to the community that needed it. I served as a translator when they spoke Spanish and they could not communicate. I helped do that as well. The Daly City Public Library Associates, you'd seen me up here presenting money from them. I've been proud to help support our libraries because our libraries are giving to our community as well. With the Skyline College Presidents' Council, I, I tell you how important that is in raising money through there. Because everybody, it's not just young people, there's all ages, people who need and have that service, right? Our colleges and Parks and Rec, as I said, serving on the Parks and Recreation Commission as well as the Planning Commission. So I, I think I'm very well-rounded in the community.
If an appointment is made to the vacant city council position, it will be effective for seven months until November 2024. What do you want to accomplish during this appointed term if you are selected as a Daly City council member?
Okay. You know, I see the value in each and every one of you. I see you're inquisitive when you ask questions. I see when you say, I need to say this because the people need to know. I see when you are digesting all this information and then you look at how that fits into the puzzle. And I see your leadership and how you feel how important it is. Each and every one of you are valuable. And I believe that I can work with you so that I, so that I can be a part of serving our community. And I feel very strongly that with all the years of experience in volunteering and giving back to my community, I have a little, I hope, insight in that also, not just working with all of you, but the different departments in this city. It doesn't run alone, you know? There's our city, there's just the water and Parks and Rec and you know, all the staff. And I feel like it's important that a person can come in, whoever you choose, that will want to work with all of you and see your value and work together to work as a team. Because I'm a team player and I like to, I like to think that I also am a person who would want to do what I can to work together, to accomplish and serve the community.
If you are appointed to the city council, please describe how you will work collaboratively to achieve consensus with other council members to address the important issues facing Daly City.
I think I touched on that. I think that it's important to listen. I might not agree with each of you on any one thing, but I can promise that I would listen. And if I didn't know something, I would ask questions or I would try to find out the answers. But most importantly, again, is to see the value that each of you bring to the table. And you know, I think that the most important thing is to find, as a person here to work with all of you, is that, is we can accomplish something because your duty and whoever serves in that position, is the duty is to serve our community. What does our community need, right? And when I listen to all of you, I see it. I see that you all care in different ways. You all care about Daly City or you wouldn't be here.
Thank you. Would you like to provide a brief closing statement at this time?
Yeah. So as I said, I've lived here all my life. I have hundreds of cousins and relatives. Now, once my relative, the cousins I grew up with, once they had kids and they had kids, you know how that goes down the line? I can recognize them, but I don't know any of their names, so I apologize. But what I do have is family. Family for me is the most important. Family and the community that I serve, regardless if I get a position or not, I'm still going to serve. I'm still going to be here. I'm still going to be trying my best to make a difference, right? And so I'd like to just say is, I appreciate this opportunity. It's been an experience. I have enjoyed listening to everybody here and everybody has one thing in common. We're all here because we care. So I'd like to thank you for this opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Gail Samuelson Carpenter. Please come up.
When I get there, you finish the name, it's fine.
Welcome.
Thank you so much, Madam Mayor, council members. It is an honor to see you all in person. You look much younger than you do on TV. But in any event, thank you for letting me have a chance to speak to you today.
Our first question is, why are you interested in serving as a Daly City council member? And what specific skills and experience do you bring to this potential position?
Well, it's a daunting one, I grant you. You each in your own way have really stood out for years in Daly City. And trying to say, I am ready to join you is a big thing. I've spent much of my professional life working in a nonprofit, some of you may know, called Tech Soup. I've been their chief business development officer and out of thin air created programs that went global to the point of billions of dollars of resources from people like Microsoft, Cisco, Symantec, Intuit, take your choice, there's lots of them. And I am at the point now where frankly, I felt like you guys kind of invited me. I was reporting at Mattress, I'm, I help, if you guys don't know, I help, you should. But in any event, I was reporting to Mattress in my neighborhood. And this thing popped up and said, hey, Daly City Interrooms Council. And I have been thinking about this for a very long time. And having sat on nonprofit boards and worked in the nonprofit environment, you have to work across multiple landscapes. You have to deal with people that have a passionate vision for what they're doing and figure out how you can take the resources that exist and expand that across a broader community. And that seems to be very much what the council needs to do in Daly City. Everybody wants you to do everything and we all know that's impossible. How you decide what your best resources are and what you put into that and how you make the connections is what I think I uniquely bring of a lot of proven years. So I look forward to having a chance to make that case for you.
Thank you so much. What role do you believe local government should fulfill in people's lives?
Oh, that's a tough one. In my earlier years, I fell to the Jeffersonian, the government that governs best governs least. I've come to become convinced government needs to care more for the individual, for the humanity of basic life, of getting through the day. And at the end of the day, am I, are my kids getting educated? You know, I've been, I've lived here 32 years in this lovely little community on top of the hill and between Cocker and South Hill. And I have an opportunity to have witnessed all the things that happened in life over 32 years. You know, I've raised families, I've renovated, I've worked with the city council as well as the different council, you know, city offices on multiple projects. And so I'm very familiar with how it all works. So I think that really the barrier between the people and how government can serve them really comes down to the council as the voice of the people. You know, who, you know, how are you engaging? What are the methods that you're gathering information from that really diverse mix of humanity that represents Daly City? of humanity that represents Daily City? So, you know, that is a moving target, frankly.
Question number three, sorry for my language.
Yeah, I was going to say, I'm sorry for your voice. I've been, I've been suffering every time you have to say this question, yes.
Thank you. Describe your past community service or involvement and how that service has contributed positively to the Daily City community. Please explain the relevance of this involvement to serving in the position of a Daily City Council member. Thank you.
I'd be happy to answer that. I have, as I said, served on many nonprofit boards. I've been board chairs for others. I know the complexity of representing a diverse audience. And it's time, as I slow down my life, to give back to where I have lived all these years. I have a huge array of professional accomplishments and connections that I think can be helpful. Right now, I sit as the Vice President of the Board of our HOA at Village in the Park. It's not six thousand and change votes, but, you know, I did get the highest level of votes for the community as a first-time candidate four years ago. And it's because I believe that, part of my campaign was that, "I'm out walking my dog Lilac. If you see me, I'm fair game. Stop me, show me, talk to me." And that personal one-to-one engagement says a lot about what our board does and what a Daily City Council member can do. Because knowing how somebody can talk to you face-to-face and feel heard, even if you can't solve everything for them, is a really great opportunity. And so, you know, that is all part of my background. And certainly, having lived here, worked in various volunteer activities at schools and other things, it's a community I know well and I look forward to giving back to. Thank you.
All right. If an appointment is made to the vacant City Council position, it will be effective for about seven months until November 2024. What do you want to accomplish during this appointed term if you are selected as a council member?
You know, I think my idea of what I want to accomplish is nothing compared to what your joint vision would be of what a short-term interim board member can accomplish for you. You have things that you've prioritized and things you want to do. What I would be most interested in is hearing from each of you about what gaps can I fill? What connections can I make? How can I make my experience map to what you've already determined as the actual needs in the community? You know, I'm not going to make up something out of thin air in seven months, even, you know, I know that. You know, when I started with the nonprofit, I worked for, they were like a three-million-dollar organization, working in the Bay Area. They're now across two-hundred-and-thirty-six countries and territories around the world with a budget of close to forty million. So I know about transition. I know about how to convince people to do things effectively. And I know that it's best for me to map what I can do to what the overall vision is. And so that's maybe not the answer you were expecting, but it's the answer I have.
Thank you.
If you are appointed to City Council, please describe how you will work collaboratively to achieve consensus with other council members to address the important issues facing Daily City.
I will give you a quick example from my own homeowners association. We had a very contentious community. Of course, that never happens anyplace else. But the board that I now sit on came forward with a vision of one community. We represent three hundred households, probably about twelve hundred people in, up in that part of the hillside by San Bruno Park. And we had the opportunity to say, "We could let that division really get worse or we could find a way to individually make it better." And so we, you know, sort of split up the opportunities, looked to, you know, reduce barriers between frustrations, to figure out where the low-hanging fruit was to be able to help people communicate more effectively. And all of us said, "Okay, well, I'm not the right person for this one, but I am the right person to do that." And so that awareness of what you bring, what the needs are, and how you fit together as part of a whole, is really what I would be looking forward to understanding.
Thank you. At this point, would you like to provide a brief closing statement at this time?
Tiny one. So for, raise your hands if anybody was a candidate today. Don't mind you where I saw you, okay? Yeah. I mean, I think that is, for me, this is a diverse group of people. I mean, this covers the gambit from people that, like me, have been used to speaking in front of a microphone to people who really took bravery to get up there and talk. And it's because you made that opportunity available to us. That's what city government does at its best. It makes the people feel present, they feel heard. And I would so welcome, at this point in my life, because you even have it, I think, on your website, "If you're a boomer, you know, you're getting to the end of your working career, come support Daily City." So here I am. I really hope to have your consideration and I really appreciate your time tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Anil Shrestha. Please come up. I'll call Anil Shrestha one last time. Okay. Thank you very much. Now moving on to Tan Tam Su. Tam Tan Su. All right, this is the last call for Tam Tan Su. Thank you. I, I just want to say thank you to all of the, those who were interviewed today. Thank you for your courage. Thank you for putting in your application. Thank you for answering our questions for, from myself and my colleagues this evening. This is really wonderful to see the activation from our community members. And when we put this out for community members to apply to, is really to have an opportunity for hearing from community members like yourself. So before moving on to our recess, I would like to give a round of applause to each and every one of you. As someone growing up in Daily City, this is really wonderful to see so many people wanting to be engaged, wanting to give back. And so thank you for that. And at this time, we will move into recess. Thank you.
Everyone, we will now reconvene after our recess. And I know we needed a break in between that for everyone. And so we're now moving on to our discussion and action at this time. And so, um, moving on to item number A, deliberation and city council discussion. And then I'll be moving on to asking my colleagues for nominations. And so at this time, are there any comments from my colleagues at this time?
You want to go first?
Any comments? Go ahead.
Me?
Oh, yeah.
So I just want to say thank you for all those that came here as an attendance. I also want to say thank you for all those that have applied. It takes a lot of courage to put the application in. It takes a lot of courage to come here and talk in front of the community. And it shows the courage. It shows the love and the passion that you all have for what we all share here on this dais. And that's the care for our community, Daly City. I just want to share things that I've learned. I think one thing that I learned was there was folks that I've known throughout the community the past few years that I've got to known folks as a person that's been elected official and re-elected twice. And it got to show like the range of folks that have came out, right? It wasn't just the same old folks that come all the time, but there was new faces here. So watch out, I might be hollering at you if y'all, if I need a commissioner, I'm going to holler at y'all. And the other part is I just want to commend everybody that has shown this love and compassion to integrate so many different things. Because a lot of times when you're in this position, there's a lot of privilege that one has. And when one person has a lot of privilege, one comes with a lot of blinders. And when I see people come up here to speak, they give us the reality because they see what you don't see. And I just want to say thank you for shining light on the privileges that I have that I don't see. And I hope that for those that applied and don't have the fortunes to sit alongside my colleagues, that this is not the end, but this is also beginning to work as a bridge for our future. So, thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilmember D.G. Avani.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I'd like to echo some of that, but more or less gratitude. Gratitude because you can actually feel the people that come up here. You don't know when you're getting the list of names and of course you're reading the applications. And some you've actually had the privilege of meeting in the community, but even then you still don't even have the time to really get to know, know someone. And sure, there's these short questions, a short period of time, whatever. But you know that thing, actions speak louder than words. And then, you know, and if you, like one thing I will tell you, you know, when you come with your heart from within, you can never go wrong. I can tell you that right now because that's where you come from service. Whether you're, I learned about this when he was speaking as a nurse practitioner, whomever in this room with all the various backgrounds, the commonality of the heart. That is, this is why we live in Daly City. I know other cities have other things and looking at the different faces here. So that's a lot to share. And this unity of all of us together, it won't stop. And that, you know, things evolve and there's different changes on the council and our commissioners and what have you. And the love never changes. The light never changes from, from whatever you. And I say, this is really, um, this is really hard. I made multiple notes and even it was like short, whatever your answers were. They were meaningful. There were meaningful answers. They weren't empty. It wasn't rehearsed or like, you know, you hear in some interviews or whatever. So for that, it's so much gratitude. It's a deliberation and that, you know, that they put in our hands to try to make five seats to where we can continue doing our business for the people of Daly City. And then until November when they do that, it's really not an interim council seat. It's a council seat. It comes with everything. Like, you know, the person will be sworn in and it'll be regular council member. But, um, but with that, and you, and I will tell you, people, you never give up. Never give up. Don't ever let anybody take your light. So with that, totally grateful, the light shines in all of you. So that's why we're here in Daly City and we can make it better. We can make it better together. So thank you. What a privilege. Thank you for being here. Humbled.
Thank you, Councilmember D.G. Avani. Comments? Councilmember Sylvester, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Basically, I don't want to be redundant in what I'm about to say. So I tried to come up with something else different. The main thing that I learned this evening is that I learned from all the candidates. Our questions were geared to try to dive a little bit deeper as to what you would do. My question as to what you feel that the role of the government, and quite frankly, you've only validated and verified and solidified what we should be doing up here. And that's what I got from the interviews tonight. I really learned something. And you know, as you get older, you think you know it all, but you don't. And I can't overemphasize what I've learned. We had one candidate talk about healthcare and taking care of yourself. And something as simple as putting in a sidewalk really made a lot of sense to me. And we tend to overlook those small items, which those small items is your very foundation as to how folks should live their lives and what the government should do for them. Sustainability. I learned about sustainability. And absolutely correct. I drive around all the time and I see these mattresses on the, on the streets. And I remember getting on the council years ago. I would drive around and I'd go right on iHelp and report it. And you know, when we have communities such as you folks, that's what's going to make Daly City a much better place. I took feverish notes here. And in the decision that's going to be made tonight is based upon the consensus. But rest in mind that that decision, which I feel is for the best of Daly City. So with that being said, thank you all for coming this evening and good luck. Thank you very much, my comments.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Sylvester. Today, we saw civic engagement at its finest. And someone told me that on our Daly City website, the application process kept popping up. And it was a tool that staff used to be able to share with others that Daly City is open for these applications. And today is a testament of what our community is and the diversity that it brings, just from all of the applicants. And so thank you again for putting your courageous step forward, being here on a dais, speaking out, you know, in front of everyone. I know it's not easy, but bringing forth your passion and your care for Daly City. If that's one thread that I saw across the board, it's how much people care about the community that we live in. And so I echo what Vice Mayor says. There's ample opportunity to get involved. And it's not only in this space and place. But thank you for taking that leap forward this evening. It really brings me a lot of hope. And when I said earlier in the meeting, when it was a beautiful day in Daly City, I meant it because it was a wonderful spring day. I know we've been here together from the blue skies to now the evening. And so we're going to continue on with the next steps, but with deep gratitude to each and every one of you and all of those that are here in City Hall this evening. And so with that, moving on to item number B, nominations for appointment. Vice Mayor, do you have any nominations?
So I have a point of clarification. How many people can we nominate? Just one?
One nomination until we go through the rounds.
Okay. Before I make my nomination, I just want to say thank you for all those that have applied. It's not easy being up here, but you know, you come with the responsibility based on your own experiences and evaluating the lay of the land. And this is a hard, hard and difficult decision to nominate people to be colleagues with us. And it is also a great privilege to be sitting in this position. And I'd like to nominate Teresa Perano for this appointed seat.
Okay, thank you, Vice Mayor. I have a nomination for Teresa Perano. Thank you. And now, any other nominations? Councilmember D.G. Avani?
They're all difficult. Do we have to make our nomination now? Or do we have to see if this one goes first?
I believe it's, uh, can you clarify that?
Yes, we make all nominations. She's calling for other nominations. And then at the point of closing nominations, we'll vote in order of each nominated candidate.
Okay. Okay, so. So at this time, I'm doing this microphone on. At this time, an area that has not been represented in our area, in our city, I don't think that's ever had a representative up here in the city council that I'm a familiar of, and that's the Bay Shore. So with that, I nominate Teresa Faupoua.
Thank you, Councilmember D.G. Avani. I have your nomination as Teresa Faupoua. Okay, Councilmember Sylvester.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to nominate Mr. Tom Nures.
Thank you very much. I have a nomination for Mr. Tom Nures. At this time, um, are there any other nominations for my colleagues? I think. The next pro, can you remind me what the next process is?
So currently nominations are open. If there are no other nominations, then any one of the council members can make another nomination once they've made their first nomination. If there are no other nominations, the mayor can call to close nominations. If there are no other nominations, the mayor can call to close nominations with the first and a second.
Okay, I see. So at this time, if there's no other nominations, I call for a first or second, please?
To close the nominations?
To close the nominations.
As a motion?
May I have a motion to close the nominations? I move to close nominations, so I have a second. Is there? So you're saying it has to go through this first round, and then the next?
If there are no other nominations while the nomination period is open, then you can close the nominations, and we will vote in order of the nominations.
And we will vote in order of the nominations. I see. Okay.
So on the floor, I believe the mayor has requested a motion to close the nominations.
I second.
Okay, I have a second.
You can do it by voice vote?
Okay. And so you're saying this can be for a voice vote?
For the closing of the nominations.
Okay. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Okay.
I'm confused.
Okay, so now moving, what is the next, the next steps is moving on to?
Okay, so, okay, so it doesn't seem like we have a full voice that wants to close the nominations.
Can we have a roll call? Vote, please, on closing the nominations.
Ms. D. Giovanni?
I guess, so what happens if we vote no on not closing the nominations?
Then the nominations does remain open. However, the mayor can call. I think as a courtesy, we had requested that we do a motion and a second. But under Roberts' rules, the mayor can call the close of nominations if we don't get the vote.
Oh, the mayor can do it?
Yes.
In regards to closing?
Just for, just for closing the nominations, yes.
Okay.
But procedurally, we are closing, I mean, opening or closing the nomination?
We are closing. There's a motion on the floor to close the nomination. There's a second. We can do it in the matter of a voice vote, or we can do a roll call. In the event that the motion does not pass, the mayor can call the closed nominations. This is a courtesy of, to close nominations.
I guess she can close it anyway.
Yes.
Okay.
So this is a courtesy procedure. I think there was a second from Vice Mayor. At this point, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Is it unanimous? I need to know. Okay. Thank you very much. So now?
For the record, I vote no because I did have another nomination to make, but it looks like the motion on the floor has passed.
If, if I may, just through the chair.
Point of clarification, go ahead.
Just through the chair, sorry about that. If there was another nomination, at the call of the other nomination prior to the close, you can make another nomination.
So, okay. For this first round, and then there's another nomination. Isn't that correct?
So currently, we have three nominations on the floor.
Okay.
The call of the question before, we had a motion to close the nomination, was, are there any other nominations? And at this time, if Councilmember Sylvester does have another nomination, he may bring up another nomination.
Okay.
Councilmember Sylvester?
I have a question in this procedure. Earlier on, I think, in the procedure, is nominations for the council members. And then there's a vote, and then we move to a different round. That is what I have in here. So I think that needs to be clarified to my colleagues that there is still an opportunity to nominate in the second round. Please clarify that, City Attorney. I think it's not clear right now. For also those in the audience, we need some clarification so that those in the audience understand what's happening, that there is a first round of nominations, and then there is, there will be. Furthermore, if the vote happens, and then there isn't a consensus, then we move on to a next round of nominations. I clarified it. So there, City Attorney, in that respect. So at this point, we're going with the first round of nominations.
Point of order. The first round has not been closed. And just to reiterate, the Vice Mayor had asked, how many can he nominate? I would perceive that to mean, and I could be wrong, but I'm just putting it out there, that his intention was probably to nominate more than one. And as per the City Attorney, every council member should nominate one. Then you go back around and ascertain if there's additional nominations before you close the first round. That is my understanding. Once all nominations have been made, then we proceed to the next step. That is my understanding.
Yes, that's correct. Basically, when, when, when Vice Mayor Dasmukbal asked if he can make a second nomination, the response is that he can make his first nomination. Once the mayor has asked, are there any other nominations, and another council member makes a nomination? You don't make two nominations consecutively. Then, as you go through other nominations, any council member at that point who has not made a nomination can make a nomination. So at this point, if there are any other nominations before the close of the nomination, and a council member has already made a nomination, they may make another nomination before the close of the nomination.
Okay, so you did clarify that. It's not necessarily the first round, which you had put in the procedures here. So that's what it says. In the procedures that you have laid out in front of us. So then, there's a second nominee, but that's after the first round of nominees. That's what you have in what you've mentioned here. So in the first round of nominees, in this first round of nominees, I will nominate Pho. So there, now it's the first round of nominees, and now we're gonna go to vote. And then it's this, then after that, if there's no consensus, we move into the second round of nominations. Yeah. So at this point, there are four nominations on the floor. There's four nominations on the floor. For clarification, there's four nominations on the floor. We're gonna go in order of the nominations. Now I'm gonna hand it over. So for clarification, there are four nominations on the floor. Teresa Perano, Teresa Faupoua, Tom Nouris, and Pho. And so at this point, we're gonna go through the nominations, and so?
Point of order. So each?
Councilmember Sylvester, please.
Each council member has had the opportunity to nominate someone for the council seat. That is the go-around for each council member. Nominations are still open at this time, so I would hope that each council member, if any, can make a nomination at this point.
The nominations are open for the first nominations. City Attorney, that is what you mentioned. And then, if there is no consensus, we will move on to a second round of nominations.
Okay, so for a point of clarification, this first round of nominations is when we open the nominations initially? So all nominations, after each council member has made a nominations, we can still nominate during this period of nominations?
Thank you for that clarification. So we, okay, so now, I will go down again, and I will ask Vice Mayor, do you have any further nominations?
I would like to nominate Tony Bayudan.
Thank you. Now, Councilmember D. Giovanni?
Let's see.
For staff, do you think it's helpful, maybe you put the list of candidates for some of my colleagues?
So if you list a second one, the same one that somebody has already nominated, then that means that's?
It has to be someone not nominated already, so?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome. You're very welcome.
So just stay, stay where I'm at. Like, I couldn't nominate Tom Nurse because he's already been nominated. Okay, got it. So I'm staying with Teresa Faupoua.
Thank you very much, Councilmember D. Giovanni.
Thank you, Mayor, for the clarification.
Okay, thank you very much. And now, Councilmember Sylvester.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for the point of clarification. Prior to, just for the record, prior to the mayor making a nomination, my choice was to nominate Pho, but that would duplicate the nominations here. So I have no further nominations at this time. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. Now that we got that all settled, I appreciate my colleagues' cooperation on this and the clarification with our City Attorney. Now we are moving on. At this point, there are no other further nominations. I'm hearing, no other further nominations?
Motion to close nominations?
Second.
Okay, I have a first and second.
Voice vote is fine.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. So, moving on with the list, there is a nomination for Teresa Perano. Maybe?
Have a roll call on?
Have a roll call. Vote, please.
On the first nominee.
Ms. D. Giovanni?
No.
Dr. Rod?
Yes.
Mr. Sylvester?
Aye.
Ms. Manalo?
Aye. Oh, okay. Well?
The majority on the first nominee, that nominee is appointed City Council.
She already got it?
Yeah. That was faster than I expected. But we do have, Madam City Clerk, please codify the votes and ensure the public knows. Or just, yeah.
The vote was for Teresa Perano to be, to fill the vacancy for the next seven months or so till November's election. And it was a majority.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much for everyone's participation in what we call democracy right here. And I just want to thank everyone for their time this evening, to all the candidates, and to everyone who took their time out this evening. Really grateful, and we thank you all.
If I may, I'd like to make a comment. Thank, thank you all to my colleagues in participating in this very important step. Ms. Perano, just wanted to let, to congratulate you. Personally, I've seen the work that you've done in the community, and I guess the, my colleagues have seen it also. And I made a little note on my, on my, when we ask you the questions, I, I try to put down the highlights. And what's still out to me is there is no I in the word team. And you says, you said that you can be a team player. So I wanted to let you know, you said your duty is to listen, to find out, and to see value, and that duty is to serve the community. So with that being said, I'd like to congratulate you. Thank you so much.
Congratulations. Thank you so much. Congratulations. Any?
Madam City Clerk, Madam City Attorney, will you be advising what the next procedure is so that Ms. Perano would know?
Yes. We conceivably?
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
Of course.
She can say something.
And so the next step, City Attorney, in regards to the appointment, is there an oath that takes place, and then?
Yes, we can have the oath-taking for the newly interim City Council that fills the vacancy, and they can start as early as the next council meeting.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Ms. Perano, did you get that?
So the, the next steps is that there will be an oath in office that will occur, and then, then you can join as early as our next council meeting. And so that's the next steps.
We can actually take the oath at the next regular council meeting as well.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you very much, everyone, for your time. And now, this meeting is now adjourned.